Good morning, everybody. We'll convene as the Board of Supervisors on the approval of the tentative agenda.
Um, I would like to remove Adam Clements, right county engineer from the agenda. Um, he did drop off uh kind of some notes on what they have doing and stuff. However, he is unable to be here today, so.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Amanda, will you read the minutes of the previous meeting?
October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, Chairman Martin told the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine a.m. Members present were Bruce Fosch, Preston Lewis, and Ellis. Motion by Ellis seconded those to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of October twentieth, twenty twenty five were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. In open forum, Cluse spread a letter from the CFO at New Coop regarding Economic Development Office. Bob Ritter also spoke in open forum, asking the board if they have read the Wright County monitor on the potential new economic development director. Kyle Handy and Dave Mueller with Twin Rivers Exploration gave an update on hydrogen exploration in Wright County. The surveys will continue through November and currently are looking at a well site between Marion and Belmont. Mueller, who is drilling operations for this product, stated the well pad is four acres with drilling to be completed by January. Twin Rivers will be drilling, and I'm gonna make a correction right there, down four ten thousand feet to see physical rocks, water samples, and see if there is free flowing hydrogen. Cluse asked that they be in contact with the drainage clerk about this location to be sure there is no disruption within any drainage tiles. Mike Hiersen with the Economic Development Commission presented the stipulations on the new hire for Economic Development Director. Aaron Budwig, the vocation hire, introduced himself to the board and answered questions they had. Motion by Cluse and second by Rassinsen to approve the hire of Aaron Budwig as the new Economic Development Director. Motion carries for Fosch voting name. Motion by Cluse and second by Ellis to approve the tax increment financing indebtedness certification for the air business part. Motion carries. Motion by Ellis and second by Cluse to approve the tax increment financing indebtedness certification for their nutrients. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse and second by Luce to approve the tax increment financing indebtedness certification for the wind farm urban and rural area south plan. Motion carries. Adam Clements, right county engineer, given us the number six hundred and eighty roads. Congratulations to Denise Baker on thirty years of service to Wright County. Motion by Luce and second by Rassinsen to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
She has one correction she'll do. Other than that, though, stand approved as well after she makes a connection or correction. Let me know when that's done and I'll come in soon. Claims have been around. Open forum for the public. Hey, Bob?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I see you've got the consideration for financial support for the amicus brief. Uh, in Shelby County regarding Summit Carbon. I just want to thank you for all your past work, especially you, Dean. I know you've been working hard on this stuff. Uh, just got off a Zoom meeting with Free Soils. Uh, they're encouraging everybody, all the counties too, to get in on this and because it isn't just a pipeline issue, it's a property rights issue. So, uh, I just want to encourage you to go ahead and uh get in on this. I know you and I have talked about this before, Dean, but uh the rest of you, uh, especially the new ones, uh, this is something that should be very important to all Wright County citizens, whether you're involved with the pipeline or not. So, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Anything else on open forum?
Yeah, this is Julie Glade. Um, and I just want, I, hi there. I just want to um echo what Bob just said. I appreciate everything you guys are doing and I just um encourage you to uh join in this um amicus brief. So, thank you for for all you've done.
You're welcome. Thank you, Julie.
Me too.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, Chris Oliver, Wright County Veteran Affairs, to discuss Operation Green Light.
Um, the Economic Development Department has already done a release that pretty much states everything. It's the fifth year for it and Amazon is the funder of it and that's the proclamation. If you could sign that, please. Um, it talks about our offices and how much money we bring into the state and what all we do for the veterans and their families. Um, I can read the whole thing if you'd like me to. Yes, please. Okay, Rick. Well, Rick has it. So, Rick to read?
No.
Sorry.
Nice drive.
Okay. Whereas the residents of Wright County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly, selflessly served our country and the community and the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and the sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Wright County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for all the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, Veterans of War's, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually and an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. Whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and burrows to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Wright Wright County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific rec- recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Wright County hereby declares November fourth through eleventh as a time to salute and honor the sacrifice and or service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Wright County will illuminate our bell tower green as part of Operation Green Light for veterans. And be it further resolved that Wright County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made in measurable measurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window in their place of business or residence from November fourth to eleventh. Twenty twenty-five.
May I get a motion to approve this?
Operation Green Light?
All in favor?
I said, I said.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes?
And I wanted to state in twenty-nine states and the District of Columbia, county veteran service officers serve as essential advocates for veterans and their families. CBSOs are often the first point of contact for veterans in their community, looking to access federal benefits, assisting with the right wide range of services, including VA healthcare, home loans, education benefits, job placement assistance. In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, thanks in part to the tireless work of the CBSOs, two hundred and seventy-three billion in federal dollars was distributed to veterans in counties across the nation. That's a lot of money. Um, and this Veterans Day is the is the fifth anniversary of Operation Green Light. Um, NACO and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers have donated three hot three thousand sixty-nine counties, parishes, and boroughs to join in support. I think it's pretty cool.
And we did receive a, there was an email sent out uh through NACO concerning.
And that I got that when I was in Des Moines. That's why I wasn't on the agenda that.
So, with the federal government shutdown, are are service people still receiving their benefits or has that slowed down?
Compensation and pension benefits are being received.
Okay.
Um, the, you know, the the military are are not. Um, the overseas do that donation that was received. The overseas people are receiving paychecks.
Okay.
But not the people that are stateside. So, I mean, they're just like all the other federal employees. I'm like, it's not good. But the banks are working with them. There are several banks that are working with them for their home loans and car loans and and food banks. It's like that, you know?
Because once it's done, they will get the money they haven't gotten.
The military will. The military will, but not some of the federal employees. But that's, I'm here about the military. So, yes, the military people will get their money back. You know, they just need to get this over and done with. Everybody can go back to normal.
Uh, update on Veterans Affairs Legislative Updates, anything?
Oh, yes. And I'm sorry, I'm pretty passionate about this. I've been pretty angry for a couple couple of weeks now. Um, I'm going to give a little bit of history of our offices. Um, I was hired in two thousand and two to do this job. Um, there were twenty counties in the state in two thousand and two who did not have veteran offices in the counties. In two thousand and six, a law was discussed to require a CBSO in each county. In two thousand and eight, the law was implemented. And it was also required that you be nationally accredited through NASCO, which I was before we were required to do that. And because every county was required to have an office, the state allowed um a ten thousand dollar a year allocation to be presented to the counties to cover the costs of the startup of the offices. And that was in two thousand and eight. The rules for that really haven't changed a whole lot since then. So, if you haven't started up your office by now, you've not done your job. But um the ten thousand dollars includes the education that I I attend, that I'm required to attend, and also uh keeping updated with because the federal law never changes at all ever. So, it's really important that I attend as many trainings as I can to keep on top of the federal benefits. Um, but it also includes um mileage, meals, and lodging for me to attend the national training, which will never be in the state of Iowa because we're not big enough to host it. We don't have a city with enough hotel rooms and have the space to house everybody that belongs to NASCO. Um, last I knew, there was thirty-seven states that were members of NASCO. So, that's that's quite a lot. So, it will always be in a state large enough to host it. Um, they are doing it virtually, but you miss out on talking one-on-one to the people from DC. That that's a huge, huge thing. But um, and NASCO is the initial accrediting entity. They're the only ones in the United States that can accredit us, which is a thirty-two hour week-long course that you have to take and you have to pass a test at the end of it. Um, the American Legion, VFW, DAV, that Vietnam Veterans of America, all have memos NASCO stating that we trust you to train these people and that they know what they're going to do. So, we'll allow you to train them and to certify that they're going to do a good job, which allows me to cross-accredit it, cross-accredit it with the entities so that I don't have to take their education. Uh, the VFW also has a week-long education that they require their people to to do before they can become accredited representatives. So, us going through NASCO is a huge thing. And and all the other entities understand that we are being taught well. Um, and NASCO requires sixteen specific CEUs every year that I have to get. Um, two years ago, state legislation required that all CBSOs also have a PIV card, which I I previously had to that, which allows me access to the federal database. And they also require that you're cross-accredited with three entities. Um, I'm cross-accredited with four. Um, last year, the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs made changes to Chapter thirty-five B that removed NASCO from Chapter thirty-five B and replaced it with the terminology, the commandant, which is the appointed entity of the governor that runs the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs. So, instead of the terminology, you know, NASCO rules, it's per the commandant. Whatever the commandant wants is what we are supposed to be doing from here on out. Um, and they stated it was to increase our choices for education.
Well, um, would that be like our governor Iowa chooses?
Okay. Yeah, it's an appointed position. Um, each time the governor changes, the appointed person changes also.
That's your commandant.
Yeah. Yeah, and he's, right now, it's Todd Jacobus. He's retired National Guard. Um, and he's housed in Marshalltown and he's in charge of the the state nursing home there. And um there's Camp Dodge, which is housed. Um, there's a building there for the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs and they have, I believe, four employees there um that do different things. And then there's the state cemetery. And so, he's he's in Marshalltown and Gavin Sandvig is in charge of Camp Dodge and the cemetery. So, it's kind of split, but Todd is still in charge. But Todd doesn't know what we do. And 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 he doesn't need to. It's, it is what it is. But um, so now this year, the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs has changed the administrative rules, which go along with Chapter thirty-five B. Um, their proposed rules, and I have copies of this back at my office, of the current rules and the proposed rules. There's a lot, a lot of changes in here that are going to affect my job. Um, and I'm going to talk about part of the budget. Um, the wording for the ten thousand dollars has been removed, which I've been talking about this for quite a while. I, you know, so I've been increasing my line item for education for the past five years or so. Um, the terminology for the ten thousand dollars has been removed. The whole paragraph concerning the ten thousand dollars has been removed. Um, they do allow three thousand dollars to reimburse counties if they attend a class where they can get CEUs. Um, and that terminology is still in there. But they've also proposed language that removes um the money being used for lodging, miles, and meals. So, that would be the county's responsibility, which for me, I'm fine with that. I have enough money in my budget to cover that. But there are some counties that rely on that ten thousand dollars. Transportation includes the airline flights if we have it out in Reno or um South Carolina. That ten thousand dollars covers the cost of that. So, they are no longer allowing that to be a reimbursable cost. I mean, and no travel whatsoever. That's a huge thing. And plus, um, with removing NASCO, they have added four extra hours of CEUs that we're we're required to have. So, now we're required to have twenty, according to the state, instead of the sixteen that national says. But they don't have any requirements for what those four are. They haven't told us what their expectations are as far as getting the four extra CEUs. Um, and I would like to talk to people. If you would, please stop by my office. We can talk a lot about that.
So, this is all being proposed, but nothing has passed yet? Or it has passed?
Um, they did have the Google meeting for the administrative rules um in October. Um, it's pretty much, it's a done deal is what we've been told. So, we've we've got a lot of work to do as far as Chapter thirty-five B goes. Um, but so with all that being said, they are requiring more of us, but you know, with no definition to it, I mean, an extra four hours, that's that's not a lot. But I'm going to show you what our agenda was for fall school last month. And while I was attending this, uh, Mr. Jacob was not on the agenda, but he spoke and he told us that we are underserving the veterans. We're not doing our jobs and that we need to file more claims, which we're not allowed to file frivolous claims and we will lose our accreditation and they will pull our PIV card. Um, hmm. It was, it was a very abrupt and brisk chat. And he, like I said, he wasn't on the agenda, but if they want us to do better, this is the agenda they gave us. This has nothing to do with our jobs, nothing to help us do better. It was a, in my opinion, a huge vendor fare. So, I was, I I'm not exactly sure what's going on, but it's not good. Um, I think we know the writing on the wall is where the governor wants to consolidate a lot of things. I think we're probably on the list for twenty-seven. I don't know. But when I started this job in two thousand and two, according to stats, we had thirteen hundred veterans living in Wright County and there was eight hundred thousand dollars being brought into the county. In twenty twenty-five, according to the census, I have seven hundred and eighty-nine veterans living here. And there is eight million dollars being brought in. Tell me I'm not doing my job. I'm doing my job. I'm very unappreciative of being told I'm not doing my job. And and that I need to do things that are not li- literally part of the rules. They're asking us or they're telling us that we need to do things that um may cause us to lose our um access to the federal database. Um, I, I don't understand.
Well, obviously, your direction from this board is not to do something that would violate your, not only your personal convictions, but uh take away your accreditation because without your accreditation, the veterans aren't going to get anything from Wright County.
No.
So.
No. Well, and I'm, I mean, I'm planning on continuing what I'm doing, but I know I have asked questions and of course I talk to Lucas Binkin a lot and he is our legislative liaison. I have flat out, yes, and I have flat out asked, you know, there there's federal regulations and there's state regulations. If I don't take that ten thousand dollars, am I tied to the state and do I have to follow their rules? They're looking into that because federal rules normally trump state. You know, and but it would cost the ten thousand dollars. Um, my budget can sustain that. I just won't be handing back as much. You know, so I'm looking at revamping some things. Um, not as much outreach because the money's going to have to come out of my budget to cover um for traveling to training and everything. I mean, I'm going to have to do some shifting around of line items, but I'm still going to be okay, you know?
So, is is ISAC working on this problem? I didn't see that in their legislative priorities.
Um, no, because hmm, this wasn't told to people. I mean, the commissioners, which you were commissioner, um, the week before our fall school, they have a meeting with the commissioners and the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs now runs that. We no longer do. And um, they were there Monday all day long and they never said one word about this to the commissioners a week before. Now, the statistics that Todd used in his speech were from twenty twenty-three. The twenty twenty-four stats have come out three months ago. So, I think that his speech was created a while ago.
So, uh, I know that you're involved with NACO, not NACO, uh, with ISAC. Um, you've made them aware of this and so, okay.
I've got Lucas's personal cell phone number, so, you know, I, yes, he is, he is very aware. And we have a legislative liaison. Um, the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs hired their own lobbyist. So, he is there every day. You know, um, our affiliate can't afford that, but we do have a legislative liaison and he works for Polk County. So, he is there and um, he is at the Capitol as much as he can be. You know, but hmm, stuff happens. So, we we've just got a lot of work to do. Um, I'm no longer district president, so I will not have to be dealing with the other fourteen counties. I can focus more on the legislative stuff. I am still on the legislative committee for ISAC and for our um affiliate. So, I'll be focusing a little bit.
And is the new district president, are they in tune with this issue and they're working it from their side?
Yeah. Dan Green is from Cassup County and he was my trainer. So, he's just moved up. So, yes. Yep.
And you still helping out quite a few other counties like you have?
No, I'm I'm done now. Um, I was done with um Hamilton County. Um, October eighth was the last time that I went. And and now, like I said, I'm no longer, as of the end of October, I'm no longer district president, so I'm not required to do that anymore.
Did, had they got somebody hired and in place?
Yes. Yes. Yes, and she was hired um a year ago now.
Okay.
So, but she had not been trained appropriately. Stuff was.
Right.
You know, so so we we just did cleanup. You know, she's doing very, very well.
Good, good.
Good. Thank you for the update.
And please stop by and.
Do you want this? I've got this signed for you.
I'm not politically correct, so I would not be a good public speaker.
And Andy Yethel is aware and he's got, I think, his lights lined up.
What's NASCO's thing for?
Uh, National Association of County Veteran Service Officers. And they have an office in DC on the hill.
Thank you.
And they're aware of this issue in the state, right?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, moving on to number six, Consider Financial Report for Acemis's Brief and Core Service of Shelby County Regarding Summit Summit Carbon Solution Pipeline. Dean, do you want to take that?
Uh, yeah, I read the letter from uh ISAC uh last week. Uh, there was a webinar that was, uh, I, when I checked yesterday, it still wasn't posted on the on the ISAC website, but uh that I participated in. Um, and again, we're recommending that all counties take note of this because this is not a specific pipeline issue. This is a local control issue. So, um, whether a county has got pipeline going through it or not, this is uh very important. And with that, I think uh uh I would make a motion that we uh contribute five hundred dollars towards the amicus brief that is being done by uh through ISAC. And that five hundred dollars goes to ISAC.
I'm going to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all ayes?
Yeah, it'd be, it, it, the amicus brief is going to be approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. And um if we can get uh all, at least, you know, half the counties of the ninety-nine to join, that will cover that twenty-five thousand and then hopefully more will because it does affect all of our resolutions and ordinances. And um, and it just kind of over overrules any power that the Board of Supervisors do for their citizens within the county. So.
Will that come out of the LATCF?
Yeah, and if uh I meant to have that part of my
That's okay.
motion, then yes, and we would pay for that out of the uh LATCF funds.
Um, is there like a bill that they're going to come with or will be paying just off of this letter?
We will pay off of the letter, but they will provide a uh invoice for us.
Of course.
Yes.
That was discussed in the webinar.
So, are we paying it now or are we waiting until you get something?
No, we'll pay it now. Please. And uh you still have a copy of the letter? It had, okay, or to send it to him?
Old business.
I did meet with uh City of Galt. Um, you know, we, I gave you an update a couple of weeks ago, um, met with them and insurance agent. And um, he's going to get back to us uh maybe possibly starting Janu- with a quote of starting maybe January one insurance. Um, I get the feeling that the City of Galt still wants to stay incorporated. They don't want to unincorporate. They want to stay. So, um, we'll see what that brings and and hopefully we can get a little bit and move moving some stuff around. Um, you know, if, you know, you work with deductibles, work with the valuation or a value of the buildings or whatever and try to just maybe get a little bit cheaper insurance.
I think they'll save it. City Council meeting next Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
No, well, if they have it, it's fine. Yeah. There's a veteran to stay.
Yeah.
Any new business?
Uh, tomorrow is Election Day, so I would encourage all residents to get out there and vote.
Um, you have your IDDA annual meeting. Um, we just got the uh Waterways.
Hmm.
and so we need to let Courtney know, and I guess that can be under drainage also, but new business under drainage.
And I just got a email for the, uh, supervisors winter meeting, it's in Mason City.
District meeting.
District meeting.
Hey.
And there's a fifty dollar charge, we have to let them know by November twenty-sixth.
Okay.
To cover the cost.
The date of that meeting is?
Uh, December fourth.
I just got that, I'm just.
Did that just come?
Yes, it, it was Thursday, December fourth, at Brian and Wine in Mason City. And there is a, I said fifty, yes. In order to cover all expenses, registration will be fifty dollars, please complete and close registration form, yada, yada, yada. And send it there, is it, says Brian in Hancock County Supervisor. And you may have gotten, I don't know if you would get that.
What was the date?
December.
December fourth.
Nope, I mean, that you got your email?
Just to.
Just today, just, just a few minutes ago.
About fifteen minutes ago.
I can make a copy of this and present it to, uh,
Amanda.
Yes, oh, I was gonna say to Joe, excuse me.
I met with the, uh, Humble County Supervisors and our sanitation, Sandra, to explain what all they are getting, which they were glad to get together and find out everything they're getting, because they were looking at possibly doing their own sanitation person, but once they found out what they're getting, what they have to do, more than likely, we'll be staying with them.
But Jamie Russell will be in?
Yes. Because there's quite a bit more to it than just going over and checking out leach fields and dust and swimming pools. It was a very good meeting. And I think Bob Rasmussen will be on that taking Sandy, uh, Lonnie's or Looney's place. She's retiring.
Who did they hi- or who did they appoint?
I don't think they did appoint.
They haven't appointed anybody, yeah, but.
Place for the sanitaryian. I'll see, I mean, you have Rick.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Rick and his brother. That has a bar. Meeting's at the bar.
We, we got a, me, uh, a, an email on the Wright County Hazard Mitigation Kickoff Meeting, and that is November thirteenth at three o'clock.
And I also sent you guys an email last night. Um, Wright County Fair invited you guys to.
Yes.
Where is the mitigation meeting at?
It's a, it's a Teams meeting.
Microsoft Teams meeting.
Okay.
And it came from Mark Duffy, who sent it.
All right, I'm all Tuesday night, uh, which with, with the government shutdown, sort of delaying some stuff, making it tough for people on certain things, but hopefully they get that straightened out. Anything else on, uh, updated meetings?
Most true, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Take a five minute recess, and we'll go into our Drainage Trustees Meeting. Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Would you read the minutes from the previous meeting, please?
Uh, we've got two of them. First one is October twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-five, the Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the drainage district with the following members present. Rasmussen, Pluse, Luke, Bosch, and Ellis, also present were Courtney Morris, Drainage Administrator, and on Zoom, Amanda Meyer, Auditor. Other interested parties, we get Zoom, were Wright County Monitor, Robert Watts, Robert Ritter, Dylan Bosch, and Gary Woodley. Chairman Rasmussen called the meeting to order at ten twelve AM. Motion by Luke, and seconded by Bosch to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minutes of the previous meeting on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five were read and approved. Motion by Bosch, and seconded by Pluse, to approve drainage plans for payment. There were two work orders that were reviewed and approved, they were both for DD thirty-six. First one was in section thirty-four of Nor- Norway Township, reported as a ditch bank washout above tile outlet with numerous sloughing sites between the road and exposed tile location. Second one is in section thirty-five of Norway Township, reported as sloughing. Morris presented the following drainage invoice for Mazdam Construction for DD one oh five, section thirty of Grant Township, for one thousand seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. Motion by Rasmussen, and seconded by Ellis, to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, uh, I know that, so I was just saying, if you guys would just give me a minute, okay, October twenty-ninth minutes.
Uh, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, the Wright County Board of Supervisors met in special session as trustees of the drainage districts with the following members present. Rasmussen, Pluse, Luke, and Ellis, also present were drain, or Courtney Morris, Drainage Administrator. A conference call with Harden Franklin and Hamilton County Trustees was held to review, approve, and sign an open drainage invoice for JDD forty-five dash big four. Present on conference call were Harden County Supervisors Lance Granzo, and Renee McCle- McClellan, and Ann Larson, Drainage Administrator. Franklin County Supervisors were Gary McVicker and Chris Van Ness, Collette Brunns, the Drainage Administrator, and Hamilton County Supervisors April Ely and Mary Clausen, and Lori Clausen, Drainage Administrator. Chairman Rasmussen called the meeting to order at nine thirty AM. Motion by Pluse, and seconded by Ellis, to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Wright County Chairman Rasmussen called the joint meeting to order. Motion by Wright County Pluse, and seconded by Hamilton County Clausen, to approve the invoice for Joe Hera, and then amount of one thousand three hundred dollars for brush and weed control in Wright County, motion carried. Motion by Wright County Pluse, and seconded by Hamilton County Ely, to adjourn the joint meeting, motion carried. Motion by Ellis, and seconded by Rasmussen, to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections? If not, the stand approved is read. Drainage, uh, planes?
We have one drainage frame for today, which is the invoice for Mazdam Construction for the one thousand seventy-four dollars and fifty cents.
Most true.
Second.
All in favor? All ayes. Open forum for Pol County Board Regarding Drainage Districts. Review and act on drainage work orders.
Uh, you have five work orders. Uh, the first one is, uh, Betty's in Drainage District forty-one, section thirty-six of Wall Lake, which was reported by Neil Thomas as a blowout on an eighteen inch tile, and he requested Henninger. The second one is for Dean in DD thirty-six, section twenty-nine of Lake Township, uh, reported by Larry Anderson as a washout where the intake is located on the west side of the open ditch. He requested Mazdam Construction. The third one is for Dean in DD fourteen, section five of Lincoln Township, reported by Kent Kirstine as a beaver dam. Um, he requested Mazdam Construction on that, and he did state that he has contacted the Trapper. Uh, the fourth one is for Dean in DD one oh five, lateral B, in section thirteen of Lake Township. It's reported as multiple, multiple blowouts along fourteen inch tile in the northwest, southeast of section thirteen. He does not have a preference on the contractor for that. And the last one is for Betty for DD ninety-seven, section three of Vernon Township, reported by Kyle Moss, as two blowouts on a twenty-four inch tile, and he does not have a preference on contractor.
Did they, uh, did Kyle by chance say anything about how soon or they need to have it done? I talked to a contractor this morning, um, but said probably it'll be spring before you can get to it. I didn't know if that made a difference or not.
For this specific one?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, he did not specify.
Okay.
Review and sign any open drainage invoices.
We have none.
Any else before the, uh, proceeds?
Uh, just two things, um, contacted on Friday by Brandon Meyer. Um, I let Dean know this morning, Brandon was out working on a location that they did not realize was a drainage district asset for Tom Gangstead. Um, once they started the repair, they realized that it was a district asset, so, um, I did instruct him that Tom needs to report that as a work order. Um, but while Brandon was out working on it, he threw his back out again. And he threw it out a couple of weeks ago, and thought he was better, and ended up throwing it out again, so he's gonna try and take some more time to let it heal. So he did request that any outstanding work orders that he has be, um, reassigned to other contractors. I did look it up, and we do have three envo- or three work orders out for him, um, so I will get those, um, re-assigned to somebody else there for Chris Chambers, Morris Brandt, and Paul Echoff. Um, and I will double check with Brandon to make sure that he hasn't completed these and just hasn't turned in invoices before I reassign them. Um, so that is the first one, the sec-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, uh, the Morris Brandt one, he specifically requested Brandon, so that will probably be a, a wait. That was on DD thirty-six, I believe, correct?
Thirty-six, that one.
Yeah, he specifically requested Brad, so.
Okay, and I might reach out to Morris too, and kind of explain. So that they know as well. And then the last thing is the IDDA Annual Conference is December fifth, um, at the Crossroads Hotel and Event Center in Port Dodge. You guys have, should have those, uh, registration forms that came for the IDDA meeting, that is in your box. Do you register for that, if you're gonna go? And it looks like the fee for that, the pre-registration cost is eighty dollars for being an IDDA member.
Do you sign us up for that?
Sign myself up for that. Just fill out the form, turn it into junk.
Great, I lost my form.
We can make you a copy.
I'll make you a copy right now.
It's right inside of that, Rick.
Hang on, I got it, Dean.
Got it.
No, but that'll tear out the article.
Anything else for the Board?
I've had, you guys did have a chat from the regular meeting, if you wanna look at it. Um, there's just for Margaret's one.
Just for lunch.
Um, yes, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted them to read it. While you guys are doing it.
It says, and I hope the Board of Supervisors will both to support the initiative ISAC is making in trying to protect counties in the future, the local control nationwide, and more counties that participate, they grow your strength. It finally has five hundred dollars, and it's not very much money to invest in something that has such a potential big consequences to counties and their home role in the future. Let me get these to Amanda. Did you print the?
Yeah, I printed this. I need to sell some of my mileage, uh.
I'll make a motion to the Department of Drainage Trustees.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you. Thanks, Courtney.